Welcome to the Milford School Committee Meeting for Thursday, July 24th, 2014. This meeting is being recorded and members of the media are present. If anyone would like a copy of this evening's meeting, please contact myself or any other member of the committee. We'll start off, good evening everyone. Start off with the approval of minutes. Has everyone had, all the members have an opportunity to review the meeting, review the minutes? All right, so we'll take a motion for, from Joe, second from Dawn. All in favor? Motion approved. All right. Next item on the agenda would be invitation to speak. Is there anyone here for invitation to speak? Jerry? No? Okay. So, seeing no one, we will move forward. Next, we will move on to announcements and correspondence. Any members have any announcements or correspondence? I just have a couple of quick things. First, since our last meeting was actually on the last day of school, and I know you're going to give a report afterwards, but I did get an opportunity to speak with several teachers as well as administrators on a very successful close of school and very, very pleased to hear that, you know, it went nice and smoothly the last day. Everybody made it home safely, you know, and I know that lots of kids are off to school, off to the community uses, camp is already in full swing here, so. Also, just want to update the committee as well. One of our, one of our alumni this past weekend was actually elected as the new mayor of the Heights for the Portuguese picnic, former chair of the Milford School Committee, and that was Will Kincaid. So, figuring alumni that was recognized within the town, still serving the community as each of you do, so figured I would share that as well. Congratulations to Will. Any other, Bob, any announcements for you?
I just wanted to announce that, as the committee knows from a recent email from me about John Hughes, the recommended my appointment for interim principal at Middle School East, the DESE has approved that waiver. I just got notification, I'm waiting for the letter from the commissioner, but from the commissioner's assistant, it was a favorable recommendation, so I have that, so we'll be welcoming John Hughes. I still want that paperwork to be in front of me before I make that formal announcement. But once I do, I'll invite, you know, the community to know, we'll have an office hours for anyone who's interested in meeting with John, getting to know him. A seasoned administrator will do very well to, not only just to really hold the fort for the next two years, but really to build, to now bridge the eighth grade to the middle school structure. He's got a good handle on the middle school model and will have already hit the ground running. He's been there, done that kind of guy, and great personality, will fit very well within our team, very well respected in the, in the community, so. Wanted to just make that formal announcement and, again, I'll make that more of a public announcement and invite him, invite people to a reception for him, again, once I have that letter from DESE, but all, all signs point to final approval on that.
Excellent.
All right. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, and this is the disciplinary action, this is a carry forward from the last...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that no disciplinary action be taken against the superintendent of schools.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. We will call for a vote. Do we have a, all in favor of no disciplinary action being taken against the superintendent of schools? We have any, any against? Okay. We have five in favor, one opposed. At this point, we will move on to the next agenda item, no disciplinary action will be taken.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Next agenda item would be superintendent...
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
All right. So, all right, I, I came here three years ago and I presented what I, what I thought was a clear violation of policies, right? That's when I was a citizen and I wasn't on this board. And at the time, the board decided not to do anything about it, okay? That's what got me to run for school committee because I couldn't believe that the school committee, whose main role is to oversee policies and make sure that they're followed properly, wouldn't follow through with that. And the fact that what just happened here happened without discussion and, you know, I just, I find it kind of shocking because I, I take this job seriously, I signed up for it, and it's very clear that our role as school committee members is to oversee these policies and make sure that they're followed through. Craig Kinzigley, God bless him, sat in front of us the last meeting and said, not only did he know that he was in violation, but he apologized for it, which I commend him for. And so you all know that a policy was violated. And to not even, in my opinion, have the, you know, I, it's not like I want, I said this in the last meeting, it's not like I'm doing this because I want to, I'm doing this because I have to, this is my job. And it was clear that a violation happened of a district policy and, you know, I, I think you're sending a pretty bad message when you're, you're not willing to hold people accountable. And again, Bob, I'm not trying to take anything away from all the great things that you've done, I'm really not, but, you know, it was violated and something should happen, whatever it is. So, I, I guess if we're not going to do anything, you know, I can obviously, you know, address it in the, in the annual reviews or whatever, but I, I just, I, I can't help but to make a comment that I'm really disappointed that, as, as fellow members of the school committee, that you didn't at least have an open mind to at least have a discussion as to what should be done if a policy in this district is not followed. I think it's a, it's a really, really bad message, my opinion, but anyway, that's it.
Mr. Chairman? Just a comment, I think, I think it's important that, for people who may be tuned in for the first time perhaps, that think that this is just a policy violation, you know, it's important to put that into the, frame the context. It's a, it's been a longstanding practice, I'm not saying it excuses it, I'm not saying, I'm just putting the context, forty-plus years of practice, whether it's a tacit, you know, policy violation or whatever, maybe should have been addressed thirty years ago. The fact is that wealth, health and wellness policy came up much after the fact, people designed that policy, I don't think they gave any thought at the time to music, the pull-out music being a violation of that. It was more around making sure that in the absence of state requiring PE, you know, the specifics about PE, that physical education was required by the district to be twice a week. This is to ensure that our kids would be healthier, okay? So granted, I just want to, it's important to put it in context, talking about a policy violation of some students being pulled at one grade level for string lessons, that's, just so we're clear about what policy is being violated, it's important to also note that that policy is no longer being violated, it's been corrected and was corrected shortly after you brought it up. It does take time, we couldn't turn that around as quickly as you had wanted that to be done, given the number of students that were impacted and the schedules, but I am pleased to report that that has been corrected moving forward as I reported in the last meeting, so I just want to put it in context.
Okay. And, you know, I want to make sure that I am clear on this as well. Excuse me, this was a carry forward from the previous agenda. It was something that, as we've discussed in previous meetings as well, it would have needed to be handled per the requirement in an executive session component. Bob, you opted through communication with me verbally to have this, have a conversation in open forum, and it was a discussion with any motions that wanted to be made at the time. You know, accountability has, takes many shapes and, and every member has their, has their own level of accountability that they so choose. That's one of the, one of the, the benefits of you having seven independently elected to, you know, managers, for lack of a better term, so. You know, Dawn, I certainly, I know you've put a lot of, you know, you've, you've certainly have come in with a lot of information and presented to this board, and, you know, I certainly, you know, commend you for that. I know you've done a lot of work and, and spent a lot of time, as you have with everything, so certainly commend you for that, and, you know, I think it's, at the end of the day, that's the, it's, it's at the pleasure of what the board and what the voting members of the board, of which we all are, choose to do as far as going forward. So I certainly understand your feelings on it, as, as I feel, understand the feelings of all the, of all members, so. Appreciate your sharing your, your feelings as well as the feelings of all of us, so. That being said, we will move on to the next agenda item. Superintendent's end-of-cycle summative evaluation.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yes, I'm going to just stand on the other side of these for the presentation. I know we've had a few lengthy meetings, the last several meetings, so this promises to not be one of those. I will move quickly through it, I know you've had the information for some time, maybe a couple of months, I'm going to walk through it quickly, but I want to frame up for you the first piece, so you have, you should have in front of you, I hope it's the one with your name on it, is the summative evaluation form, and I, we've tried to set this up, it's probably your second hard copy of this, I think you have it electronically as well if you wanted to complete it electronically, but I thought it would make the most sense to walk through, this is sort of in tandem with the next agenda item actually, is to walk through the goals that were set and mutually agreed upon for the school year with me and the school committee, and then you have that reference document, you actually should have two documents, one is the, the end of the year report from me, and the other is the summative evaluation, which should have your name on it. So what you could begin to do, if you were interested, was to take notes on the summative evaluation, because Scott, you'll determine a point, I think you said in August sometime, you wanted to have each member's submission?
I think, and it was in the email that was sent out to you?
I want to say it was around August 25th, that date sticks in my head, but it may be...
I think we actually ended up, I think it was, it was actually extended to August 31st.
Okay. I think with the idea of it being reported, the evaluation, my vision be reporting it in a, in a public session in September.
Yes.
So this can give you a head start on it, certainly you can complete this form electronically if you prefer that, and then Scott, however you want to go forward as chairman, just, and again, and you may already know this, but just for the benefit of the Cliff's Notes version of it, for members who may not have read the thirty or forty-page abstract that goes along with it, the committee does individually report in a sense, then, but what is shared publicly at the, at the forum here is the chairman's report, which is the, you know, the collection of that in one voice. So the school committee doesn't evaluate me in one voice, but each of you can independently evaluate as well, so, just so you have the context. Again, so it's structured, I'm holding myself to the same standards that, to which I hold the principals and to which they hold the staff, so this is a great tool for us because it's consistent district-wide from, from the superintendent to the staff and vice versa. So that said, I think I gave you the, the context, let me, I want to explain the form a little bit to you though. So the way the two documents will reference, and for people who may be viewing this at home, this is just the summative evaluation that I'm speaking about, in a moment I'll speak about the, the end of the year report, but the two documents speak, so on here where you see professional practice goal, student learning goal, district improvement goal, this is going to refer to the more detailed second document that you have. So in this form, as I go through the lines, you can evaluate, so this is kind of like the high-level summary, so you're not going to see the goals embedded into this document, the goals on the other form are really, and they'll be broken down the same way, a professional practice goal, student learning goal, district improvement goals, you'll see those on the other form, and that's where you summarize your evaluation of my performance. Does that make sense? The rest of the form, there's this whole separate set of indicators around the four standards, and you'll note from prior presentations from school improvement plans that they've built upon the four standards. So we've tried to bring some continuity, that principals are building their goals and their school improvement plans around their evaluation standards, which I have the same, so in the end, we're all speaking the same language and working toward the same goals. That's the spirit of what we've tried to accomplish, and it's taken us, the new evaluation tools helped us to do that, but it's really taken us about seven years to get to this point, and it's, it's something that we're awfully proud of as a leadership team. So when you get to these standards, this is going to be the summary also of the pages that then follow. So what you'll have following this is a rubric, and there's sort of a sub, subcategory, so for example, if you look at, I'm on, I think it's page three of the summative evaluation form, where it has 1A curriculum, 1B instruction, so that whole section relates to standard one, so if you go back to that first page, it's standard one, so it's going to be, it's going to be an aggregate of what each of the subcategories are, so you'll have a chance to just check the boxes and rate. The proficient mark, the proficient box is, is bold-faced and highlighted because that's the DESE, that's where they want you to be at, you know, they recognize that some superintendent, some principal, some teachers will be exemplary in some areas, maybe overall, but maybe not, and there's area for needs improvement, but proficient is bold-faced, not, that's, that's common form in all the forms that we have district-wide, that's really the target. Proficient, as far as the narrative, for the, so for example, where it says comments, and you'll see that it says there, the proficient, you're not obligated to write any comments unless you want to, if you're putting something there, as you see, for exemplary needs improvement or satisfactory, it's, it's recommended to comments so you can explain that, why it's good, why it's not so good. But for proficient rating, comments are not necessary, if we're following the letter of the law, sort of, so to speak, on these forms. So anyway, that's, that's the context that I wanted to give you for that form. That should, as you, as you look through that, and now as I talk about the goals for the year, you can begin to make notes on this form, it might be helpful, so when you do your analysis, you don't have to go back and replay this video or think about what was said. So that note, it's really a note-taking form for you. Also, and supplemental to that is the, the evidence binder that Melissa uploaded onto your Dropbox, so whether you had a chance to look at that, you can, in between now and the time that you report back to Scott, you'll have that at your fingertips also, and if you prefer a hard copy, I didn't make one for everybody because it's, it's pretty, pretty substantial, but I have a hard copy as well. Any questions on kind of how I've laid the groundwork for that so far? Kevin, did I miss anything in sort of making this clear?
No, I think it's, I think it's pretty clear, Ken.
Okay. Because the form can be a little confusing, especially if you've not used it before. And Jen, you might have used the principal version in your, in your professional role, but you may not have seen this sort of adaptation from the superintendent.
It's not the easiest form to, so helpful to have the explanation.
No, it's, it's, it's not, yeah.
So Bob, do you want to pause for a second?
Sure.
Joe, you've used it once. Dawn and I and Mike have used it the most, and it's only twice, so, and I know this is the first time you guys have used it. Is this pretty clear stuff? As far as just reading through it, have an opportunity, you've looked through sort of what the evidence looks like, certainly is an opportunity for us to go through and do it. One of the things that, you know, has been very common in years past is, this is an opportunity that when you look through the evidence, if you have questions on these things, you reach out to central office and talk to Bob, and certainly be able to help explain, Kathy, Kathy and obviously Dr. McIntyre as well, can help kind of walk anybody through any of the information, any of the evidence, if there's some, you know, some late-night reading that you're doing as you're going through that evidence report, because it's not obviously, it's, it's a fairly lengthy report, and some of it's written in pretty plain English, and some of it, there's a reason why some of these guys have PhDs. So, it's, it's not necessarily the simplest thing. So if you have any questions for any committee member, reach out, and actually for, in, to that extent, these are all public documents?
Yes.
So any community member that has any information or questions regarding the evidence, the evaluation tool, or anything that's, that's discussed at any of our meetings, but particularly this, they can certainly reach out, either myself as the chair, or any member individually, and certainly to central office, and I'll do my best to explain it if anybody calls me.
Sure. And if you find as you're going through evidence, and, so there's an evidence portion on each of the pages, it's not necessarily, it's just examples of evidence, doesn't have to be all of those items, if you find that you're trying to assess my, my progress in one particular area, and you'll find that the evidence that I've, again, it's a sampling, if you'd like to have something different, or you want to have a discussion, Bob, tell me more about this and why you think you've met this goal, let me know that, I'd be happy to either clarify it or provide, be something different that would give you what you need, or if, you know, if, if you have an area that needs to be improved, you can maybe talk to me about that as well, I'd be happy to have that discussion with you, so. So that's really the end of that agenda item. I wanted to just give that item first to give the context. So now using that tool, that summative, and linking it to the professional practice goal on the other form that we just talked about, is now where I sort of detail out a couple of professional practice goals that I'll, that I'll speak about. And I'm not going to belabor this, again, I, I think it was the June 5th meeting, I started to go through this, and I think that we, the committee agreed that we tabled this for this meeting to make the two kind of work in sync. So I know you've read it, I know you've seen it, and, and none of this would come as a surprise to the committee, I've probably reported on all these items in different ways over the course of the year, but I have to give you, in my view of, you know, where I think I've achieved on there. So, this is the end-of-cycle report, looking at the, the building administrator, the first slide, building administrator capacity, superintendent as coach, I, I, in my view, I have met this goal from where I've worked with principals, and you see the, sort of the evidence here, the conversations I've had, you know, with principals, and just working to build school culture. Now, Joe, I remember at a prior meeting, I gave some highlights of district accomplishments that were sort of successes that we can all share, and, and I remember making a comment saying, "Don't worry, there'll be opportunities for me to improve," and, and so there's always, I think of all of these goals, that there's room for improvement no matter what, and in my job, there's, in any of our jobs, I suppose, there's always room to do, to do better. So, at the same time as you're hearing me report on how I think I performed in these goals, and then your perception on that, which may or may not match, I would ask you also to be thinking about sort of goals you'd like to see me set for the coming school year, because I think they're sort of part and parcel. They may not be, what I don't want to get in the pattern of is sort of repeating the same goals unless it's really a district improvement goal, and it's necessary for me to zero in on that goal. But for example, building administrative capacity, I'm going to continue to do this work, I'm going to be working with our leadership team as I have been, it's not going to go away, just because it's not a goal there. The leadership team, the administrative walks that we did this year, Kevin and I have already scheduled those, or begun to schedule those for the next year, so a lot of this will be carryover in terms of superintendent as coach and working to coach building principals. Again, so that's, that's my assessment, my, in my view, the benchmarks that are there, again, are provided in the evidence. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you want to field questions as we go, or people can just interrupt me, but I'm going to kind of go, kind of swiftly through it, but...
I'll take it at the pleasure of the committee, I think it's, you know, for me, I've had the opportunity...
It's pretty self-explanatory, but...
Yeah, this is pretty self-explanatory stuff, and I'll take it at the pleasure of the committee, whatever the committee's favor is, you guys want to, as a committee, do we want to have Bob just go through each of these different sections? Do we want to take it...
Just interrupt me, Will?
I'm comfortable doing this unless I have questions.
Okay.
I'll stop if you don't mind.
Yeah, so just interrupt me as we go.
If that works for the full committee, Dawn, Joe?
And again, you'll have the opportunity to comment further as you reflect on these, so it's not the only time, and this is not intended to be, you know, a public evaluation tonight, because I'm just sharing the information with you, with the evidence, so you want to take the time to think about this, look at the evidence, talk with me if there's any questions, and then, but again, it's, it's just, it's part of the requirement that I report this publicly to the committee, is part, if we follow this tool to the, to the letter of the law. So the next goal is student learning, so on your other sheet, this would be that second column down, here, I mean, I'm not going to spend any time on this at all, really, hospitality and tourism management program, in, in my assessment of this, I exceeded what I set out to do in this area. Again, you know, you always deserve the right to feel differently, but if you, if you think I'd need more improvement in that area, whatever, just, you know, let me know that. But I've briefed the committee at the whole process with this, from the, from the budget and even months before that, but just to give an update as to where we are, the committee will recall that we're submitting a chapter 74 application, and for the benefit of the public who may not have followed this discussion, Milford High School is, will be the only school, a comprehensive public high school in the state of Massachusetts, to actually have this kind of hospitality program as a vocational, a true vocational program within a comprehensive high school. So there are schools, there are plenty of vocational high schools that offer hospitality, most focused on the culinary aspect, this particular program here focuses on the, the hospitality side and the tourism industry side of that. The chapter 74 application, I've been back and forth to the DESE, there's a few loose ends to tie up there, and if all goes as planned, they should come out to do a site visit at the end of the summer, early fall, and ultimately approve us for, for as a chapter 74 program, so making great progress on that. It's a, it was a long, it was a year-long process to submit that application. If there are no questions, I'm going to press on. The response intervention, this is full implementation of the workshop model, so the workshop model is really, for those who don't, don't know this language, this sort of educational jargon, it really structures how a teacher manages their classroom, how much time is spent on certain areas and how that's all managed, but it's been inconsistently implemented throughout the district, not, not by any, any fault of building administrators or, or teachers, but only because the training happened some time ago with specific pockets of teachers, some of those teachers have either moved on to different roles, so we've been capitalizing over the year on the in-house talent who've had that workshop model training to impart that information and kind of share that. That's some of the problems with, with PD, as people move on, you've got to catch everybody else up with what's been happening, so this is an ongoing, Scott?
PD being professional development.
I'm sorry, yes, right.
You know my feelings on that.
I wish I had the educational jargon. Professional development, right, so this is, this is ongoing, you know, I lean to Kevin on this, this is, this is Kevin's area of expertise, he guides me in many respects, so here's an area where I think more work is necessary, and I think I've rated myself on this one as a, as a significant progress in this area. I don't know that this goal is met, in my view of it, I think there's more work to be done in this area, and certainly a focus of ours as, as we look at curriculum this past year, but we have made some progress in this area. It's not, it's not fully met in my view though, just to, you know, be perfectly straightforward with you. Unless there's any questions on that, I'll keep trucking along. Workforce training seminars for Milford High School students, the idea behind this originated with a, I was trying to get the school committee involved and the community involved in some way to better, I think Mike and I talked about this a while back, to get high school students ready for interviewing for a job, or getting just, you know, to fill out your resume, you know, with a pen, not a pencil, you know, dress up when you go get the application packet, how to manage an interview process. So this was really conceptualized to be a sort of a one-fell-swoop training seminar for high school kids who might be entering the workforce. What instead came out of this, so this is a goal that I, in my view, I'm going to call met, but it's not met in the way that it's detailed here, in a different kind of way, back in the fall, for the members who were here then can recall, we have, I'm on the board for the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation, and they had a career day at Nittmuck High School this past year in October, and from that grew this now, this workforce training, and instead of having a one-time springtime training seminar, we've now built it, if you recall Kerry Bonnack's presentation, into the high school curriculum, so every kid will have a taste of this instead of it being a one-fly-by. So in many cases, it really exceeded, although from my perspective, the goal has been met, but I, I could arguably, it's exceeded what the spirit of this was, and you'll recall, this was really intended to be a way to bring the school committee, alumni, back together here to share with the, with the students.
Bob, I think one of your plans in this benchmark was to have those of us that are involved in management, that being hiring, unfortunately firing, or disciplinary actions or resumes, things like that, to come in and speak to the class?
Yeah, and that will still happen, but instead of it happening as a one-time, I have reached out to, and I think where it started to lose, it became a very busy spring for, for a number of reasons, really around curriculum, the DDMs consumed a lot of time for us, the district determined measures that we had to submit to the DESE, the hospitality, the number of these goals were more time-consuming, I think, than I originally conceived. I had reached out to a gentleman to be a keynote speaker, to bring the whole auditorium of high school kids, you know, of high school seniors together, and that'd be sort of a kickoff, and then have members of the committee, alumni, come in and do these presentations as we, as you just mentioned.
Right.
But the keynote didn't happen, and it began, at the end of the, before we knew it, April was here, and it was just, it was just too late to execute, in my opinion, execute well, so I had the courage to just back off the goal and not do it sort of haphazardly, but I am again pleased to see that, working with Kerry Bonnack, we've built this in to a curriculum model, which now will have much more sustainability, so it doesn't have to be a one-time goal, it now has long lass or a shelf life, but the, the spirit of what we've done is looking to still call members of the committee and, and alumni to fulfill that when we do roll that out, so.
Thank you.
It's been met, but not met in the, in the, in this particular context. So how you view that from your evaluation of this goal, from your own view, you know, you can look at the evidence that's provided in there and make your own judgment of that, you know, and I'm humble enough to tell you if I did or did not meet the goal. In this case, I would say the goal has been met, but again, not in the way that it was laid out here, but it was met through another avenue. I just didn't modify the goal. Moving on to the district improvement, so this would, this would report, this would still be part of the, the second, second assessment tier on the other form. Educator evaluation process and procedures, again, in my view, and this is, I guess, my chance to tell you that, I think I've exceeded in this area, you have, it's a fairly lengthy document, we'll be reviewing this with the leadership team at the retreat this, in, coming up in the next few weeks. Version 8.6, which this committee signed off on and agreed and trusted me to lead that effort, along with members of our administrative team and with members of the MTA Bargaining Evaluation Subcommittee, and as I mentioned at one of the prior meetings, we've had just tremendous cooperation between the union and administration on this. Some of the highlights of those changes now afford any administrator with a principal license to conduct evaluations of staff. Up until that change in version 8.5, it was just the principal. So taking Nancy Angelini's one example across two campuses, she had to singularly, and for those of you who do evaluations in your job, she had to do 116 evaluations of her staff, each evaluation requiring this kind of review of evidence as well as, you know, three to 10 classroom observations, so you can, you know, imagine that her life was basically in classrooms, which is where we want principals to be, really. This now allows that to be sort of parceled out among administrators, but they must hold an administrator license to do that kind of evaluation work. That's just one example of some of the improvements that this, this instrument, and what we'll be doing is, I'll be doing a, the back-to-school meetings that happened in September at the building level, over the course of the summer, the principals will be up to speed, so they are comfortable communicating these changes to, to the staff at the building level, so So they're clear. Nothing really, there's nothing really substantially changed in there, but it does work for both the membership and for the administration in making this document a little bit more user-friendly. Coming into now year two, a full implementation of this, I think you'll hear less complaints among staff about this is over our head or it's too much to take on. In any event, this is, in my view, clearly exceeded what we had set out to do in the beginning. The benchmark on that, I want to just point this out, the year-end staff survey for the district support is a tool we use. It's called Baseline Edge. Some districts use, there's really two competing models. There's Teach Point and Baseline Edge. These two tools are really a tracking, an online tracking mechanism. Teachers go in and they put their goals in there, the principal will respond back. It's just a communication, and it's really electronic archiving of a personnel file. As teachers are doing something in their classroom, they think, so this is good evidence I want to submit, they can upload evidence to like this dashboard. One question I asked the staff was, do you like this tool? Would you want us to look at something different? Because there's sort of a learning curve with any system. It's about evenly split. About 50% of the staff are very comfortable, and then they have the staff, you know, they need more learning. So instead of us now changing to a different platform, we're going to provide more support for those staff members, and we know specifically by their comments what kinds of training is necessary. So our professional development this year is really grounded based on staff feedback. So that's in the evidence binder as well. Any questions on the educator evaluation? That's, that's pretty complicated. I'll be honest, it's complicated for us in administration, and we do, this is our day job. So I would expect that you guys will understand everything that I just said, but if you have questions along the way, let me know and I'll be happy to explain it as best I can. But the real success from this is not so much the document itself, it's the relationship between the Teachers Association and the administration, which at times, as you know, can be challenging. It was very cooperative. Milford Public Schools Alumni Office Development, this is one of those great things where you have an idea and then you can sort of parcel it out to somebody else to take the lead on. So that's just what happened. We have an alumni office now that's growing. And as a result of last year's homecoming, we have a homecoming that's set again for this year, and they're building that up, and then it will be an opportunity for, you know, alumni events, and we'll continue to grow that alumni database and then begin to link. One of the goals of the alumni office was, the main goal was to get an alumni database of at least 100 members, and we have that. We've accomplished that goal. So that goal's been met. But we're looking to really go one step further, not just have a lot of people that we can communicate with on Facebook or let them know about events, is to now somehow link the alumni with our students. So if, for example, a high school student wants to look in a career path at EMC, whatever, just using it as an example industry, and one of our alumnus, you know, is an EMC employee, they can find one another. So you want to be able to link that database like you'd have in your college and that sort of thing. That's the next step for us. That will be one of the goals that I'll be setting forward for this alumni office development moving forward. So by all accounts, that goal has been met, and now going to another level. And that's really it for the goals that were mutually set by the school committee and me, looking ahead to next year's goals. And as you think about things like, hey Bob, next year you should focus on this, this, and this, and now I take seven of you who all have two great ideas, and now I have 14 goals. Not to mention the ones that I have in my mind. So we're going to have to have some good dialogue about that. So I want to put out there right now, let's keep in mind, the Woodland School Building Project is a major piece that needs a lot of attention. The Middle School East reuse work that will demand attention and time. Not to mention the evaluation instruments and the goals that I mentioned here, things that have to be now carried out. The next piece of educator evaluation, which you should know, is going to become the performance of students linked to teacher performance. And you'll see actually on the form that I gave you, the summative, there's a part on there about student performance. Right now, it's really, we're not making that link yet, but we're about a year away from making a link to how our students perform on MCAS or PARK or whatever the standardized test is going to be, to that now being reported to the DESE. And then an assessment being made as to how that teacher performance links to student performance. Ultimately, that will link to me. And then you'll have that data to also add that one other element. That will be, that will be a hairy discussion. There's going to be significant pushback on that, and just to give you an example of why that might be pushed back, you can imagine as you get to sort of clusters of teams where there's four or five teachers, and now you have a student who's performing well or not performing well, which one is sort of to blame on that? And do you blame the one who only has the high stakes accountability? And what if it's not that person? And you can see how that could become pretty dicey quickly. So we have, Kevin and I will be working on that, and Kathy will be part of that with negotiations, but Kevin and I will be working on the same kind of positive relationship that we nurtured on getting the tool change to version 8.6. There'll probably be some sort of 8.7 forthcoming that will link the student piece, and I'll brief the committee on that. But that's going to be some work that will happen over the next two years, although it's not a specific goal in here, it's required that we do that under the law.
Just one, one question I have on that is, as you mentioned, obviously Kathy and Dr. McIntyre, and you will be working on that. Is it fair to assume that our ELL director and our special ed director will also be included in that conversation?
They'll be included on it. They're not part of the subcommittee that would discuss it though. So the subcommittee has a balanced membership of MTA, sort of MTA board-level people.
Yep.
And the district, district management people.
Yep.
But Kevin will be in those meetings. In this past version 8.6, Kevin sat in on some of those meetings, Meg sat in, Jen sat in. So yeah, they'll, to answer your question, yes, they'll have input. They won't be voting members, but they'll definitely be able to inform the discussion.
All right. I just, the reason why I was asking about that is just kind of thinking through it a little bit is, is I think about the students who sort of need the most help, they sort of fall under their two worlds.
Right.
And which could certainly have, you know, depending on how the benchmarks are set, if we're using PARK as an example, I could certainly see how that could potentially greatly impact Jen's world.
Right.
And certainly Meg's world as well, depending on, I mean, I'm thinking about, you know, some of the medically fragile folks and some of the folks that are involved that Meg works with every single day, that she does a great job, and I think the district does a great job of being able to keep in-house. However, am I evaluating teachers because the state requires them to take a state standardized test knowing that the students may or may not be able to read through no fault of that teacher, but due to some of the educational and either physical or emotional or mental or intellectual limitations that they may have? So that was my, that was the reason why I was asking the question. I think it's whether they're voting or not, you know, that's for you guys to decide. That's why it's your day job. But I would be remiss as a, as a community member and quite frankly, as a community member as well as quite frankly as a parent, if I didn't ask that question. Because I think it's, you know, when we start linking teachers and to your point, I think it's, you may want to wear a helmet to that first meeting.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be, it's not going to be an easy one. I think there's some great accountability. We've got some tremendous teachers here in Milford that do an amazing job. I think it's always that, how do you evaluate how they do when it's a different group of students from one way to one year to the next? I think there's somewhere, somewhere in the middle is where it needs to meet. But I think as far as impacted teachers, I think our ELL teachers and certainly our special ed teachers could certainly have some very significant impact on that.
Yeah.
Which could filter up to building administration and...
Right.
You, my friend.
They're going to have, they're going to have a voice, and the teachers will certainly have an opinion on this, no surprise.
Yep.
So the way I view my goal of this one is sort of being the, you know, the optimist and the diplomat and making the relationship so that we can work through, like we've done with other parts of the evaluation tool that have been somewhat difficult to digest.
Yep.
A little bit easier on everybody. And again, I want to underscore the cooperation we've had with the MTA on this. They really have been a good partner.
Yep.
So the committee should, you know, should know that, because sometimes you hear complaints and you hear things, but the overall spirit of a fairly large association has been a very positive one.
I think the other piece, if you don't mind, just to add to that, is, for example, the letter that you sent, I think you sent it to one of our representatives that we got a copy of this week.
Jonathan Andyson.
Oh, yeah.
Some of the concerns about the number of initiatives and things. And I think, you know, especially when you look around the state and the tenure of superintendents, which is far shorter than your tenure here, you're probably one of the more veteran superintendents in the state.
About 2.8 years.
I think having that voice with the DESE and continuing to share with them the concerns that are happening in the districts and the classrooms, because, you know, to your point, Scott, that's exactly what's going to happen. We're going to have really talented teachers who are going to shy away from taking our most challenged students because they're going to be afraid of, what's this going to do to my job performance and my employment? And that's not the way we want teachers looking at students. And I think the more that the Department of Ed can understand what this is looking like and that there are many measures of student success, not just PARK or MCAS, you know, I think the voice of you and the other superintendents is so important.
Yeah, thanks. It's going to be a challenge because it's come up, we've heard it in the curriculum committee meetings, when you held, hold some teachers accountable to an MCAS or a PARK standard, and then you have other teachers that have developed their own in-house measure. It's not, you know, there's no measurements that are sort of psychometric. It's just kind of, you know, I don't know how you describe it. It's, it's a challenge because then you have the teacher who's, let's just say, teaching, I don't know, art, you know, how do you come up with a rating that's on par with an ELA PARK exam? You know, it's going to be, there's going to be subjectivity, but yet are both are held to the same standard relative to that assessment that they determined. So there's going to be some inherent challenges. And it's, right now, it's fine because we can say, yeah, I'm going to develop this assessment, and this is what I'm going to do. But when they're now held and it's a stamp on their DESE license as to how they performed against that measure, that's when I think we're going to have to have the rescue team ready. And I'm trying to head that off by making sure that we have good buy-in before that even happens. So we've been successful up until, up until now, I have no reason to believe that we won't be going forward. I believe, and Kevin and I were at the superintendent's conference last, was it last week? It feels like it was months ago. And there's much less discussion about people being angry among superintendents. The DESE has clearly heard from us, and they've backed way off, and you can feel that pressure just kind of released, which is good.
Good.
Let's just now focus on enough of the initiatives that they've laid out already. So that leads me into now the strategic plan, and what I would just ask in terms of guidance here is, again, you've had a chance, I'm not going to read, I'm really not going to go through and read all this. It's pretty, it's pretty big, but I want to just describe and give some sort of a broad stroke of what it's about. And I have had some feedback from some individual members, and I thank you for that. The strategic plan is intended to be, is if you read this with a lens saying, well, Bob, you really didn't get into this document in detail, you know, who's responsible for what and by what date and those kinds of accountability measures, the intention of this document is not that. This is really from the collective input from, not just from sort of from the central office down, but it has teacher input. We had teachers in our curriculum committee meeting, which is about 30, 40 strong, we had, we had these posted, these big posted boards around the room, and teachers put forward, curriculum committee members put forward what they believe is the need for the next three years in the Milford schools. We took all of that input. We synthesized that together. We sat with, you know, principals had a chance to give input on this, school councils gave input on this, members of our central office team gave input on this. And then we've come up with this sort of broad-stroke plan that lays out what we think makes sense to sort of take on. It's a very ambitious plan. So what I'd like you to do is you think about goals in two ways. One is a reflective, as I have done, reflect on my performance, and I'll do the same. Also reflect at the same time on the strategic plan, and some of this language should look familiar to you. It's things you've either heard before that we're going to continue, or it's items that were presented by principals in the individual school improvement plans that were built. It's a two-way sort of feeding mechanism. This plan informed those plans, and those forms informed this plan. So what you're hopefully seeing here is goal-setting from the teacher level that goes right up to the district level, of everybody working toward the same end. And I know that sounds simplistic and maybe from a corporate world, you're like, well, yeah, of course, it makes sense, Bob, this is what, this is how we do business. But let me just tell you, in public education, that is not how business is typically done. Usually, it's professional development that's disconnected, disjointed. It's goals that are building-specific or teacher-specific that have no relevance necessarily to district efforts. And we've been working hard together as a leadership team to bring that all to, and when you have everybody, as you know from your own industry experience, working toward the same end, we have a good shot at meeting a lot of these goals. But going to be things in here that are, that are budget impact. And so looking at the first one on the, and now I'm on the strategic plan around technology, we have Paul Blivis, our new IT person who's on board, you know, he's a town IT director, but has been a good partner with the schools, will continue to be. We've got to be forward-looking now to the Woodland project. Not that we haven't been, but specifically to technology and what one of the goals will be for me this year, it's going to be a goal that I'll be giving to Kathy and to Kevin as well, and it's something I would just ask you to keep in mind as you think about other goals for me. This is a must-have. We've got to be thinking about what direction of technology we're going to take when Woodland School opens its doors. Because the way the design is right now is we're proposing to invest the money in the infrastructure, the network architecture for that building, to deal with whatever device may be in front of kids in two years from now, which could look a lot different than the iPads in front of you right now. So districts that have gone with an exclusive iPad initiative, and there are a lot of them, may or may not be poised for what's to come. I want to make sure that we roll this out long-term, that we've done it, we're not giving technology, you know, devices to kids and saying, now what? I want to make sure we have the curriculum in place and the technology is just a tool to get it done, not that we're having to force-fit it. But we have two years, really one year, to make sure we have a plan to execute the rollout. So the goal this year, and I'll be working with Kevin, with Dan Nelson in-house, with Kathy, Rob Quinn, Paul Blivis, to go out and see what are the best practices across the state around one-to-one device technology. In my quick assessment, and it will be more thorough, I'm also going to actually capitalize. We have a couple of teachers that come to mind, Rebecca Lewis at Brookside School, did a dissertation on instructional technology, and Donna Gomes working on the dissertation at the moment about, on the same topic. We'd be well-served to take teachers that we've invested in around technology and bring them to the table and take now not only what we see at schools, but also their collective experience with researching this, you know, fully as part of, at the doctoral level, to get their input. So when I come back to the committee next year with a plan, it will be a fully-vetted, fully-informed plan that looks at best practice and the literature out there around this. Doesn't mean it won't change in two years as technology grows with us, but what I want to put out for the committee to understand is that we look about Woodland School, I'm not envisioning, unless you tell me otherwise, I'm not envisioning a school where you're just going to see classrooms with three desktops in them. I'm envisioning a school that's built completely robust network where the design enrollment of 985 students, every kid and their teachers can have a device in their hand and not have a gap of accessing the internet. That to me is money better spent because it's long-term vision thinking, and it's not just the device at that moment. But there's going to be a budget impact we have to be mindful of going into this thing. We're going to have to figure out how much we're going to budget for technology, and it's going to, it's going to, it's going to bring up a difficult discussion about the haves and the have-nots, and what families bring their own devices. It's going to bring up not only cellphone policies, but basically one, you know, any kind of device policy, how we're limiting access to the internet, you know, what blocking, there's just so many facets of this. That will be a substantial part of what I'm going to do this year is one of the goals around this technology goal. It is spelled out here broadly, but what I wanted to do was instead of coming tonight with predetermined goals for the coming school year, I'm hopeful that we'll arrive at those together, that they're not so big that I can't meet them, but I will then lay out a specific game plan for year one is what we're going to do, and then the specific benchmarks, which will include site visits, some of which has been laid out in here. So it's kind of a big nut on technology. I don't know if you have comments or questions there. It's clear in my mind, I don't know if I communicated it the same way, but this is going to be a big area of study. We can't open Woodland School and say, now what? That won't happen. You're going to have a plan from me well before that ever happens. Okay, any questions or... Okay. So, again, I'm interested in how the, the big categories, curriculum initiatives, unless you want me to read through these, I don't think it's necessary, but I wanted to underscore the technology point, because it relates to the Woodland project in particular, as to where we can begin this process at grade three, or grade four, five.
And then we'd be looking at Woodland as kind of a model for the rest of the district, so it started there, will then...
Then it grows with those kids.
Yeah.
Rather than trying to roll this thing out and say, okay, you know, here's a one-to-one initiative, rolled out three through twelve, now we're, it's best if we take it to our kids, and a third grader is probably one of the most adept kids using this technology. And the teachers there, we're gonna work with the teachers there to have some pilots rolled out over the course of the year, and make sure we have this thing designed. The idea would be to carry it from the grade three forward. I also know, I wanna make sure, and I said this before, I'm kind of old-school on this one, there's a real need for book skills, and our kids are gonna graduate with book literacy as well. It's not gonna be exclusively textbooks gone, unless, again, unless the committee takes a position that, you know, when you get to college, not everything's electronic. As you guys know, and as people know, you gotta have the skills to do both. Curriculum initiatives are laid out in here, the evaluation process and procedures, I'm, I don't know if you're following with me, I'm on section 1.3. Again, I've, I've laid out, I've talked about that already, it's just laid out here, and the idea of, is this, is that I'm gonna be pulling from each of these year-one initiatives as part of the goals that I'll be setting for next year. This is why I say it's a really ambitious strategic plan, because in order to pull off everything we've laid out for 2014, 2015, is gonna be a full-time job for the entire leadership team focused on these initiatives. And that, you know, that's all under standard one. Standard two, teaching all students, data-driven instruction. Kevin's done a great job with our schools in having district, building-level data teams, really looking at student performance, and we, the data right now is still embargoed, right? The MCAS data is still embargoed?
It is, it is.
Can we give any kind of?
We can't.
We can't, we can't say, we can't tell you anything, except I think, I think we give a thumbs up. Right. We can't say anything. But what we're doing with data is, is looking good.
Good.
All right, well, we have to respect the embargo, but when that, when that is lifted, we'll, we'll let you know how the students are performing. But by all accounts, we're on the right track. Okay, focused program expansion, again, that's, it all speaks for itself. If you, if you have questions in there, I can answer them. I'm just gonna zip right through, community business partnerships, the alumni office, I talked about that already, corporate partnerships. My comment there is just, just, you know, philosophically in my mind, where we have vocational schools that do specific kind of business, I view the town of Milford as a vocational community, with the school being a hub to that. So, part of the goals that we've, over the last few years, and will continue to be, is how can we bridge the school department with other area industries, and link opportunities that are career pathways for kids, and making Milford a vocational community in that regard. Parent engagement partnerships, professional development is the last portion on there, and you, you see that. So, again, I know you've read it, I know you've seen it, I'll take any questions you have on it, but you can expect to see a lot of these things come to life over the next three years. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess I'd start with a comment. I found the plan to be very comprehensive, and as you mentioned, it's a very ambitious plan. I thought you did a nice job laying out a strong vision for our schools. The only thing that I found was, was missing, and it may be missing because we already have, it's already an area of strength, but I always wanna put the, the safety of our children at the forefront, and, you know, we've done a great job, I guess, securing our buildings, but the safety of our children goes, goes beyond that, right? It's drug and alcohol awareness, it's bullying programs. You rolled out the pedestrian, the child pedestrian safety program this year. So, I don't know if we wanna incorporate that into the strategic plan to show that this is, will always be an area of focus?
Yeah, it should absolutely be there. I, I don't think it'd fit neatly into any of those four headings, and that's probably why we missed it, but I think you're, you're absolutely right.
And it's been something that, you know, to your point showed that, you know, thanks in large part to the efforts of, of Mike Walsh and Don Cutrochio for the safety and security meeting, and certainly all that have been involved in that, and it's been a, it's been a growing cast here that Donnie and, and Mike have led, and really been a big part of, just around having dialogue of, to your point, you know, last year, you know, Donna and Mike, and through that committee along with the administrators in the town, brought in the drug awareness, and brought in, and I, forgive me, I forget the name of the individual that you brought in as the keynote speaker, the presentation.
Chris Heron.
I'm sorry?
Chris Heron.
So, the Chris Heron presentation. So, that's been a big piece of it, to your point of, you know, we've had the SAD programs and a variety of others, but I, I would certainly love to see, there's a way to fit it in there, Bob?
Oh, yeah, there's...
Good, perfect.
You know, we wanna mention, we wanna make sure we sustain things like the active shooter training that we did, you know, where Milford was a frontrunner on that, and not lose sight of that with new staff in place. It's important that we keep these kinds of trainings, so we're always ready, always on, on guard.
Yeah.
And the kids are dealing with so much from a bullying perspective, with cyberbullying and traditional bullying, and then the, the drug and alcohol awareness is the other, the other big one, that, that's an area that we can never lose sight of.
That's a great, it's a great catch. Is there anything else?
Any other members, anything else?
I didn't wanna add anything, but I can't believe I didn't even pick up on that, I couldn't imagine what was left out of this. But this is so comprehensive, and just to add on to what you said earlier, the fact that things are tied together, everything in here is tied to something else in this plan, and it's all tied to the things that we're supposed to be doing in our schools anyway. This is incredibly current, and it's so up-to-date in terms of the way we look at students and the way we look at student learning, that I, I think we're gonna be even way ahead of where we are right now by the end of 2017, based on the goals that are in here. The one thing that I was really happy to see in here, it was Area 3.2, parent engagement and partnerships. It was highlighted that schools will present on the new state assessment system. I think the more we can get the schools to be clear with parents on what's happening in the schools, I think that's a really important area of focus. Our kids just don't report. They come home and you don't have a clue what's going on in the schools, and if you're lucky, you get a smidgen here and there, or you find something in the backpack, so, you know, I'd love to see as much as possible of a focus on the different ways the schools can communicate, even if it's not just about the state testing, but just about some of the new curriculum initiatives, or some of the, the new ways things are being rolled out in the classrooms, or some of the team initiatives. That's, it's so powerful, and parents understand what's happening, and they can capitalize on that at home. So, I think that's a really important part of this plan as well.
Great.
And I think things like the homework portal, and you can sign up to get emails of your kids' homework assignments every day. I know I find that helpful. My kids may not always really appreciate that particular feature, but I think it's fantastic, I think it's a great opportunity, so, it's good. Anyone else? I think we are ready to move on.
With those changes, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the committee, and I understand I'll have to add the safety and security piece in there, and the alcohol and drug awareness, could I ask the committee to take a vote on approving the strategic plan for the next three years?
I'll take a motion if there is one. Motion for Mr. Walsh, second. From, I'll take it from Joey. All in favor? Unanimous in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right on time, right on the button.
Fly-in through. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. You're still the Dr. Tremblay Show.
I'm still the show, yep, let me just...
You're getting awful use of Kevin's tray there.
I know. I didn't wanna do any PowerPoint tonight like Kevin does, but, so, what you have is a distribution...
Yeah, just for the benefit of the viewing public, the next-gen item, because I apologize, I'm remiss in reading it, and I, I apologize. I'm a little under the weather this evening, so I apologize. Reported the superintendent of schools, an update on the athletic director slash teaching position, so...
Just give me one second to change gears.
Okay.
So, you have in front of you, you should have at your place a timeline, and I wanna just give the background on what's being proposed with respect to the hiring of an athletic director. The athletic director, well, just to back up one step even before that, our current athletic director, or former, is now the assistant principal at Milford High School. He applied for that position, so Rich Pircostable has now, we succeeded Brian Mackey as assistant principal at Milford High School. Brian wanted to go back to teaching, missed that connection with kids, and is happy to do that. So, that created the, the opening for athletic director position. And I know there was some question, and I wanna be upfront about that as well, some question about the timeline, why is this taking so long, and it's almost August, and I just wanna make sure that the public understands, the committee understands, there's a, there's a, there's a process, there's a timeline for personnel, we have to post things for, for ten days, ten working days, before a position can be then interviewed, and then you go through the interview process, and you finalize the position, and then the next job is posted, so that, that's...
And that's by contractual obligation.
Yes, contractual. So, for, I, I don't want anyone to think that we're sort of dragging our feet, or why don't we move sooner, but there's, there's a, there's a process for all of that to happen. We've been very tight to those timelines. So, we have now, we've posted a position for a teacher slash athletic director, and to explain that, that goes back to, back to a previous athletic director. That job was a union, it was always a union job, the, it was always intended to be from the teachers' association, and it's still in that contract, where there's a teacher with a athletic director stipend, that's in, in the, in the current contract language. At some point, which predates me in this role, there was a change from the teacher-ten-month directorship stipend position to a twelve-month non-teaching administrative role. So, the job landed in the, we call the Unit B, so that the MTA contract is the teacher's side, and there's the Unit B, which is the, largely just the assistant principals now. At the time of Unit B, it also included the director of technology, and it included director of athletics. So, the athletic director actually lives in two different parts of the contract, but there was no discussion when the job went from a ten-month teaching role to a twelve-month administrative role. So, what I have proposed here is putting this back, what I've, what I've posted, is a job that puts it back, and it can certainly be discussed tonight with the committee, but to put it back to where it was, which doesn't require any, any bargaining to do that, because it never left that union, that teachers' union. What it does, and I, I think it adequately addresses Dawn's concern at previous meetings about the number of students in PE, for example, at the middle level, and we recognize, and nobody's, nobody at this committee level is comfortable with the high numbers, and the fact that as, as David Chaplin reported in the Wellness Report, kids can't access the climbing wall, kids can't do the presidential fitness because of the larger numbers. By moving this position to the teaching unit, and not as a twelve-month administrative job, frees up enough money for us to hire a point-five, or, or whatever the need is to offset the class size at the middle level. So, it, it really solves a couple of problems. One is it puts an athletic director who works with kids every day in place, and it also allows us, at the committee, where it's a budgetary question at the committee, so it chooses, my recommendation would be that we fund a, a point-something, we'll determine what that is, we're looking at it right now, it looks like it's about a, a point, point-two-five position, which would offset the, the middle school class size issue. So, I think we've, and, and we've done that at a, a cost of zero to the district, so there's no budget impact whatsoever. That does not, however, include, I know you mentioned at a previous meeting about music as well, you mentioned about the PE position and adding to music, we've not resolved that, so we'll have to see about adding music, but at this point, I don't have any, there's no extra revenue for us to, to do that. But this, this move would allow money to free up, to allow for a, a part-time position to offset the class size at the middle level. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at in terms of philosophy. In terms of timeline, I actually have a copy in front of me, the, we're looking at this, the posting to close on July 30th by, by contract, and then we begin the, the screening process. I'm gonna be involved with that with Carrie. And there's been some discussion with the committee about, you know, the sort of director being a district or a building level, so at this point, whatever kind of sort of gets shaken out with that decision, I'm gonna work with Carrie directly on going through the resumes and putting together a, a comprehensive committee to, to look at the resumes and make a decision on, on that.
If I may, Bob, who is on the actual hiring committee?
So, the interview committee in place, we've reached out, I'm gonna, not in names, specific names...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just because I wanna keep this from people getting phone calls.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but I, I support, we're envisioning this as teach, you know, teacher-coaches who are in our district, you know, an athletic director, former athletic, someone who's got an athletic, you know, background, the high school principal, myself, and the middle school principal, because we'll be a middle school component to have that discussion and have that input.
Thank you.
So, what license are you looking for, for the position?
We haven't specified that, because we don't know who will come forward, and, and that's what might shake out, so we, we don't know, is we wanna, we wanna get the best candidate for the position, and we have some flexibility in there with, if they have a teaching role, they could teach a course, you know, like our director of music does, which, which may or may not be, you know, ideally, they would be certified to teach that class, so we have to see, there's enough electives at the high school, we could make that work, if it's a middle school person that comes forward, we'd have to see. So, we didn't wanna be specific to what that, what that teaching role is, we don't know who will emerge as part of the, the candidate pool. And to be perfectly honest, I haven't looked at the candidate pool, I know we've had a number of applications that have come in, and neither Carrie nor I have even, I couldn't tell you how many applications have come in, but there have been many that have come in. So, we'll have to see who the best candidate, and then see what the teaching need is, because there's a number of different electives that Carrie can move staff around at the high school based on certification. So, we'll do that once we know the person is to sort of plug in what the greatest need is.
But they are not required to have an administrator license?
They're not, there's no specific, there's no specific athletic...
So, it could be a specific license for this position?
License, yeah, there's no specific license for that. It is important to note that whatever is decided, if, for example, is discussion around the position reporting to a principal, or reporting to the central office, the way it works with MIAA, and I, I reached out to Rich, Richard Pearson, MIAA, and as it turns out, about seventy-five percent of the school districts, from his report, they have the principal, they report to the principal, and about twenty-five percent to the central office. What I don't know is how many of those ADs who report to the principal actually have a middle school program, so I don't know that piece of information.
That would be my, that would be one of my questions that I would have, is, is, I'm not saying there's anything right or wrong with it, I guess my question is, is seventy-five percent may be great, but we also know there's not a lot of schools that have, are embarking on the program that we have. So, I guess my question would be, is, is, in the schools that are out there that have the multi-school, 'cause that's kind of the population I'd like to look at, I'd like to, for us to find out about, at least from my, my personal opinion is, is, of the schools that have, of the school systems and the athletic directors in the Commonwealth that exist, that have multi-school responsibilities, not just middle school, because we know that there are some systems, some very close to us, where sixth grade to twelfth grade are all in one building.
Right.
So, it's one-building administrator. I, I guess that's the, in conversations that this board has had over the last, gosh, several years, including even before I joined the board, is really around, how do we make sure we sort of give the support to that person, as well as, you know, not sort of overburden one principal, especially as we look to expand it into a middle school program? If it's gonna become a district-wide athletic program, where it's now multi-scholes, potentially at least two, potentially three, at least in the next couple of years, administrators that are involved in it, my, my piece has always come back of, and I guess this is sort of bringing in some of my, some of what I do for a living, of kind of looking down the, all right, well, what happens if somebody's got a problem? Who do we go to? So, here's my question, if I'm a parent of a sixth grader at Nancy's school, and I've got an issue that I need to go, that needs to involve the athletic director and their, and the, and the, sort of the, the administrator that oversees that athletic director, why is a sixth-grade parent calling the high school principal? When the high school principal doesn't have a relationship with that parent, may never have a relationship with that parent, doesn't know who they are, had, may have a relationship with, with Nancy, or the, you know, with the middle school principal? So, I think it's just, it's sort of a gray area in my mind, I guess, of, of, I'm not sure that, again, from my own two cents, I'd, I'd love to get some, some data on that, and have you reach out and find that out, of, of the principals that have multi-school, not multi-grade, but multi-school responsibilities, how's that, what does that structure look like? And then maybe when we reach out to it, and find, and reach out to them and say, you know, how's it working? Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Because it may be a moot point.
I mean, principals are gonna have, no matter how it shakes out, principals have to have a role, the MIAA requires that principals attend MIA trainings with the AD.
Right.
So, there's gonna be a principal layer, no matter, no matter what.
Right.
Principals have to be involved with that. And I would just ask that whatever we decide to do in terms of directorship, where there's director, and I guess music is another, probably good concrete example, where Nadine has a teaching role at the high school, also Brookside School, but oversees the district music program, but right now reports to the, to the high school principal. And I guess it's not a problem, if there's no problem, but like to your point, if there is a problem, well, then, then what happens? And I suppose the building principal would have to address that, if it was, if it was an underperforming staff member at one of the schools, the principal would have to work in tandem with that director, but this, I think whatever we decide, what the committee chooses to do in this part of it, we have to apply that same logic to the director of music, the Title I director, any directors that are built into our system that have district oversight. And I think probably Jen Lancaster is another example, where she's a union, she's a Unit A member, is an ELL director, and reports to Kevin. But she doesn't have any teaching responsibilities part of her director role. So, you know, you can look at this any number of ways, we've done both. So, I just think whatever we should do, we should apply it consistently. So, the ELL director, we've done that, the music, we haven't, and whether that's something that we, we bring up as a matter of negotiations with the, even if it needs to be, and I don't know that, Jerry will have to advise us on whether or not that's something that we have to bargain in terms of reporting hierarchy or not. I, I don't know that. So, anyway, that's the, that's the, the update on where we are. Job's been posted due to close July 30th, and, and much to his credit, I, I wanna publicly thank Rich Pircostable, because in the absence of an athletic director, but with athletics because in the absence of an athletic director, but with athletics coming up in a couple of weeks and with fall sports meetings, Rich has really held that. I mean, he's done it quietly and he's done that in addition to his new day job. Eventually that torch will be passed. But for right now, I want to publicly thank Rich Piergastavo for just not letting anything fall to the bottom and say, oh hey, we don't have an AD in place, and, and that's not an excuse. We're still moving ahead.
I have a, I have a lot of concerns with this. And if we're going to have a discussion, I'd like to at least bring everybody up to speed with conversations that I've had. So, and first of all, thanks for, you know, thinking of adding another teacher at the Stacy School, like I asked, but, you know, this is not what I had envisioned. You know, when I brought this up ten weeks ago, on the May fifteenth meeting. And I know the chairman asked you to report back to us and work with Kathy to see if it was within our existing budget, if we could add it. I mean, again, this is the first I've heard of this, but I had a conversation with, well, you know, to the, to adding a, a teaching component to this, I'm, I'm concerned because I know in our conversations with Richie and the subcommittee, I know that he felt that in that position, he was overwhelmed. In fact, his recommendation was to add a secretary to assist with the scheduling. I also know that this is against the full advice of not just Richie, because Richie was recommending that this be expanded, his role into the district. But it was against the recommendation of both previous athletic directors, who both felt that this was a bad idea. I, I did speak to a local principal who does have an athletic director who teaches one class. He's worked really hard to get that down to one class, it's a small school. And in fact, he's working really hard to get that reduced to zero. Because all of the other schools around here have full-time ADs or full-time ADs with secretaries, right? And to his point, it's especially in the winter months, when you have the athletic directors involved in all, you know, basketball, wrestling, all these other sports. I mean, they're out until ten, eleven o'clock at night, every single night. And then to ask that person to come in and teach two, three classes in the morning, even to this principal's point, when I talked to him, said, you're doing a disjustice to the, to the kids who are in that class, because, you know, that person's only human. And so there's a lot of concern. And, and I've been getting tons of phone calls here in the last week over this, that everybody's really worried about, are we taking a step back? Which was, I guess Nick Zekili wrote a letter. I didn't see it, so I, I have no idea what was written in it. But I did have a conversation with him, and his point was, this is taking a step back. And it's taken us in the wrong direction. And in that eight-year period of which we did not ask our athletic director to teach classes, the programs have increased, they've grown, and now we've just added a district, you know, wide. You bring this to the middle school component to it, never mind the field and everything else that we added to it in the last couple of years. So, so I'm really concerned as to whether or not we're doing the right thing. So when I had asked if we had additional budget for, for a PE teacher, whether it was a .25 or .5, whatever it did to Nancy even said, it's not all the classes that are up to the seventy. She said, there's a handful. And I know we've been substituting that with bringing in assistants. But, you know, we wanted to do what's right, so that way you have certified people so they can do the, the president's thing and the, and the wall and, and all those other components. So, anyway, but I do understand that the contract's written and it was never changed. Well, I'm sorry, it should have been, right? I mean, when we changed that, what should have happened is we should have gone to bargaining and had it changed. So even if we do decide collectively to keep this as a full-time position, you know, we just have to do what's right and go do the bargaining conversations and change the contract, right? So the subcommittee, you know, a- as I mentioned, we identified the need to make this a district-wide role. And to your points, you know, who does it report to? So I'm really concerned if we don't even know what that is yet, then who should be doing the hiring, right? As far as the committee goes, having a teacher-coach, I'm not a fan of anybody being on a committee where they're interviewing their boss. I don't understand that. Don't really agree with it either. But I also know that there was a meeting that took place between Nick Zekili and John Dagnes, in which it was discussed that they'd come in and fill in for an interim period while this is all filtered out and figured out. And, and I feel, based on this timeline, that we're really jumping the gun. And I know we're under pressure, the fall season's coming up and it comes up fast, and there's lots of stuff that needs to be done, right? But just to say, we're going to hire somebody and we're going to make it a teacher, which unfortunately actually disqualifies a bunch of great candidates, right? That I know that, that have put in for this position as well. But to jump the gun and just get it in because the fall season's coming up, I, I really think we're doing an injustice here. I, I think we're much better off possibly taking up Nick on that offer, if it's, if it's still possible. Ask him to fill in for it while we vet out all of these changes. You know, the district, does it make sense? What are the other districts doing as far as teaching? Does it make sense? All the conversations that I'm hearing and having, everybody is extremely concerned about this. And, and where our former athletic director, Richie, was saying he was overwhelmed and he needed a secretary, and you have our two prior athletic directors saying it's a step backwards. I mean, I, I take that to heart. And, and I want to really make sure that we're listening and understanding the impact. And I think we're fortunate enough where you did have a couple of individuals that were willing to, to come in here and really help us. And you have their experience, you have the community behind it, and you have an opportunity to make sure that we're not rushing and putting ourselves in a situation where we may make a mistake, where that solution would actually buy us time to make sure that we're not rushing and that we're considering everything and, and doing the right thing for, for the district and the kids. So, so I don't know if it's possible, you know. I know we said on the sports subcommittee, the last update, that the last thing we needed to figure out is whether or not we expand this to the district or not, and which principals would be responsible. I still think that's really important that we do that. And we understand what that impact is on this individual and their duties. From everything I've ever heard, it's almost impossible to do what you're suggesting here. Not that it's a bad idea, and because it's written that way in the contract, you know. So I understand why you would have come to us with this. But I think what we need to do is look at what the other districts are doing. Let's make sure that we're not putting ourselves where this person is in. Because you want to know something? If you put somebody in there, has to teach three classes and have all of that, they're going to be overwhelmed and we're going to wash somebody out really fast. And, and it's going to be unfortunate for that person, in my opinion. So my recommendation would be, if we can find an interim solution, maybe a, a one-year contract or a half a year contract, allow, you know, Joe and I and the subcommittee to work out the whole district piece, report back, but also have the two principals involved. And have you research and talk to the local districts and find out what's working? What do they need? What, you know, what do they all have? And make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a, in a position where, you know, as Nick said, we're taking a step backwards and we're doing a, a negative thing to the district.
I, I have seen Nick's letter, I.
I was just going to say, I think Joe had a comment as well.
I just wanted, I actually had a discussion with both John Dagnes and Nick Zekili to, to consult with them, to ask their opinion on this. And in talking with Carrie about this and thinking, we wanted to really, one of our goals is to have a point person in place. We had one person to rely on for attending the MIAA meetings and being the, sort of the point person for the AD. And I understand the, the point you're making. It was, it was an effort to make a solution to solve a couple of issues and to operate within the contract, as you pointed out. I did ask Nick and John to work in a, in a mentor. Finally, the way it shook out was my, my offer to them was to work as a mentor capacity. Nick being a former AD here and John obviously a football coach and, and having a long history and, and having done a great job in Milford. And to have the two of them come on board for a period of say, six months or so to work with the, the, the AD as, as a mentor, to give them some guidance and make sure everything is straight in the program. So I did reach out to them, I'm not sure they're interested in, in a mentor role. But I think your proposal is different.
But my understanding was that it was suggested that they would fill in as an interim period first, but then that was taken back and then offered a mentor.
Yeah, there was discussions, we had, we had an open discussion, just a frank discussion about some suggestions, what to do. And, and what, what finally came as an offer for me, from them, was, was having them involved, but more in a mentoring capacity as opposed to two people splitting a, a job. We also took a step to, part of the responsibility currently, when Rich held the job, was during the day, with no teaching component, most of the activities began really from two o'clock on. And you're right, there are those late nights, we, we wouldn't expect this person to, to teach three classes, much like the director of music, it's, you know, it's that language of up to three, you know, so it has some time. But whether we bring on, Nick also brought up a point of having sort of game managers, and that, that piece is very much still in place. As, as is, we took away, our vision is to take away the responsibility of the student activity account management. So Rich Piergastavo had, had done that during the day. He would manage all the, the game, cash boxes and all of that. That would be taken away, we could give that to somebody else to free up that, that part of responsibility. So it, it wasn't just done saying, hey, business as usual, now teach a class on top of it. It was things taken away from that position that, that we looked at. So that's just.
Well, I, again, my, the original request for a teacher in Stacy was to utilize those, you know, the equipment and make sure that the classes weren't overcrowded. And Jen, I think you made a good point where, you know, is it okay with the teacher assistance? Or, you know, maybe it is a, a part-time position, a .25 or .5. Well, if you do that, and you can squeeze that in out of the existing budget, well then, how does having a full-time AD impact anything?
But, but we can't, we can't, the, the fact is that we don't have, the budget is built tight enough where we don't have the margin to bring in another person. This would free up that money, correct me if I'm wrong Kathy, but we looked, we looked at this and trying to solve both issues, the music issue that was addressed and the PE issue. And we felt this would serve to solve that issue. But we, we can go back and look at it again and see.
I'd like to know what, how much are we talking about? And are there things that we could cut and fund with that?
The delta's about thirty thousand dollars from a full-time AD to a teacher with a, with a, with a teacher, with an athletic director stipend. That would allow for a five thousand dollar stipend for someone to manage the student activity accounts and free up about twenty-five thousand dollars for bringing in a, say a .5 teacher. We need less than that, but that would free up enough to bring in a .5, a .5. So it would be, it would be a net zero impact.
So, so we need twenty-five for a .25? Because the AD today covers that activity account.
You'd, no, you'd need, you'd need twelve-five for a .25, I suppose.
Twelve-five.
Yeah, right, just rough number, and I'm not sure that the .25 is.
Forty-one million dollar budget, we can't find twenty-five. But twelve-five.
We can.
Forty-one million dollar budget.
The school committee can come together, they've already, you know, you've approved that, but we can look at that for personnel. Yep, certainly bring the committee back and look at the options. But again, my goal was to.
On May fifteenth, when, when this came out, and it was asked by our chairman to do this research and report back to us, unfortunately, that's ten weeks that's gone by. And I wish we could have had that before. But my whole point is, you know, out of the budget, to find twelve-five, to find a half a person and keep a full-time athletic director, in my, my opinion, would be the best thing to do, but.
I, I just, I guess I, I view it differently. I, I, you know, I wonder what an AD will do between the hours of eight and two? And are we spending the money in the best way that we can?
Well, what has Richie done for the last six years?
He's managed the student activity accounts during that part of the day, and he's managed, you know, whatever the, the busing schedules and whatever that may be. That could be done clerically at a much cheaper cost than a, than a twelve-month position. Again, it's just my, my obligations to come back is, is as you mentioned before, to make sure we're complying with our policies and our contracts and to solve problems with zero budget impact, whatever is possible. And that's, that's what I've done. Similarly, Middle School East was able to bring in an interim principal at the same cost as the former assistant to the principal, with a net zero impact, with now adding a principal there. So that's, that's what I bring to the table to the committee. Certainly, the committee can take a decision and move in a different direction. That's just my recommendation.
Joe, first and then Joe.
Well, the question I had was actually similar to what Donnie brought up. If you were going to go back to, is it Mr. Pearson, Person?
Rich Pearson.
Rich Pearson, yeah. To get that additional data point that Scott had asked for. I was going to ask if you could also ask him what other school districts are doing? Are they doing, are they moving in the direction of a full-time AD? Or are they keeping it split and having it be a teaching position? Because if the direction that other schools are going in is towards a full-time AD, then I would suggest that we, we do the same. And, and I mean, you guys all know, this role is a very controversial role in Milford. And we want to make sure that we bring in the right person, that we put them in a position where they're going to be successful. And if we're bringing them in, they're splitting time, and they're not getting the mentoring they need, then they're going to be at a disadvantage.
Jen.
Yeah, I think to all the points that have been made, I heard you mention, Bob, and I appreciate, like everyone else has said, all the steps you've gone through to try to solve a problem. I guess I'm still with some questions. I think it would be helpful if we had, and I can't even begin to process the, the dollars right now. What I'm thinking about more is what's the model, what's the philosophy? And what does this district see as the best step for our students moving forward? And is that a full-time AD or is it kind of the hybrid position that you're suggesting here? I heard you mention that a pro of this is that it would save some money to potentially add and, and resolve a problem at Stacy. But I'm not sure if that's the only pro. I also just heard you say that maybe the time between eight and two isn't necessarily the most productive time for that person. But are there any other pros of moving to this model and are there any cons? So one of the things I was just thinking about, if you talk about an early season starting in the fall, do you need to consider a stipend for this person to come in and get the fall season up and running? If they're on, I don't know how many days their contract would run, but if they're on a, a school year contract, what happens over the summer each year? I would also wonder if we went to a different model, would there be questions about safety? If anything were to happen to a student and it was because something got overlooked, because the type of position was changed, would that come back and people say, well, why'd you go to that model? So I think if we had a little more information, like you had suggested, Joe, about what are the other districts around us doing? Is this the path people are going forward with? And if so, just what's the rationale? And then when a decision is made, in, in final, you know, the final decision, then at least we can all say, this is why we went in this direction. Just a little more information, I think, would be helpful.
You know, my main concern is, we're not going to meet again until September first. And this timeline is before September first.
Yep.
So I'd really like to see us make a decision. I, I love your idea about, you know, maybe it's just the fall season. You know, could we just bring somebody in, in the interim for one season? Why we, you know, why we have our conversations and figure this all out? Especially knowing where we are not going to meet again. And, you know, until September first and the fall season's already well underway. So my recommendation would be to, to kind of backburner this. I'm not saying this won't be the recommendation at the end of the day, but, you know, let's not just jump into it and put ourselves in a, in a real negative situation. I think our best solution to this would be to put somebody in there, whether it's Nick or somebody else. And so it doesn't have to be Nick, I'm not saying that. It could be anybody you want, Bob. But find somebody who is willing to fill in for the fall season, you know, cover this, why we figure out all of this information and can make the best decision.
So I.
Do I have to make a formal motion?
I'm, you can, if you, if you, if you'd like. I don't know, and since I saw our town council just walked in, I may, if I can glance around the poll at them. Yeah, I know. You get, save money, save money on that seat.
Cheap seats over there.
Jerry, would you be willing to, can you come and join us at the microphone, please?
They're going to use the one on the, on your left, Jerry.
You know, he was sleeping. Why, Bob?
I know, I put him on overtime.
I was in mine.
That's the, that's your payment for overtime, you're taking Bob's car. Jerry, thanks for joining us. I know that this is not your intended purpose here.
No.
The conversation is you, I know you came in.
I heard part of it, I think.
Okay, so the conversation and, and what, I'll, I'll do my best to sum up and then the committee and Bob can jump in if I miss something. So essentially here's this, so Rich Piergastavo has applied for, been offered and has accepted the assistant principal position at the high school and therefore vacating the athletic director position. Through the research of, in process of trying to repost that position, what Bob uncovered as the superintendent was our athletic director position actually occupies two spaces. We effectively, if we so chose, and I'm certainly not proposing this, I want to make sure I'm very clear, we essentially have two athletic director jobs.
You could, yes.
We have one that, and I want to make sure I'm very clear. That's not going to happen. But we effectively have two athletic director positions. And you obviously know the contracts as well, if not better than anybody else. We have one that's a full-time position, that's twelve months. And we have one that is a teaching position, that teaches up to a certain number of classes each day. Or I don't know whether it's each day or each week. And, and then has a director stipend as a, as an addition to that. What is, what Bob is proposing as a cost savings, which nets out at about twelve-five, is what I understand, when you consider the additional stipends that you were talking about. So what it sounds like is it nets out at twelve-five?
It'd be a twenty-five thousand dollar savings, but the actual cost, we, we estimate to be about twelve-five to, to hire that person if you find someone to teach .2.
Okay.
Yes, but it would be about a thirty thousand dollar savings. Five of the thousands, what we estimate would be for a stipend for a student activity account.
Okay.
Management.
Yep.
Free up the balance, about twenty-five thousand, which is about the price of a .5.
Okay, so it's a, so it's a net savings right now of about twenty-five thousand. This would free up some cap room, for lack of a better term, within our, our current operating budget to add a, a, an additional phys ed teacher at the middle school to help solve for some of the overcrowding issues in some of our phys ed classes there. Some of the concerns that have been brought up around the table by, by several members and some of the questions, questions as well as concerns is, is this the direction that the district is going? Is this the direction that sort of MIAA is seeing that, and that other districts are headed with their athletic director position? Are we taking a step back to a way that used to be done? Is it a prudent step back? Or is it a step back that could potentially add some risk to either the, 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 the full success of the programming or the full success of that individual as it relates to that position? And are there other opportunities? You know, sort of there's two budgetary conversations going, there's a conversation around what's the right thing to do for, for the position and for whoever that person is. And then obviously there's the, there's the budget component as well. Um, I, I will toss in my two cents before we turn it over to you, Jerry, is, um, I do think this is a unique opportunity. Uh, Joe, to your point, uh, this is the town of Milford and we would be blind if we thought that athletics weren't important here. Um, I don't think it's, Milford is unique to that, but I, it is certainly an important piece. I think whereas, um, we're not talking about a person right now, it is a unique opportunity that if this board needed to make a decision, there's not a person impact right now. We're not saying, i- it's not, it's not from a standpoint of, well, I want it to, we wanna change it to option A or option B because of the op, because, that there's a perception of it based on the, on the individual that's holding the position. This is truly what's in the best interest of the district and the programs as we look to expand it. So what we're looking for from you, Jerry, I think, and again, board members can certainly jump in if I'm, if I'm missing on anything, is some guidance on, um, if a motion is made, can we, A, do we, can we make that decision of saying, uh, and one of the, one of the proposals that Dawn is making and, and, uh, it sounds like a, a, a mo- a potential motion of, um, asking that we look for an interim while the school committee has an opportunity to take a step back. That's one motion that's potentially been made. Is that a motion that, A, we can make and second and vote on and, and, and kinda, we're looking for some advice on you on what we, A, need to do and B, can do?
Well, a couple of things. Uh, one, you do have a unique opportunity for better, for worse. Uh, you know, when the position was put into the administrator's contract, it was left in the teachers' association contract. So you do have that highly unusual situation where you don't have to go back and, and bargain. If you decide this way, it's there. If you decide this way, it's there. So you sort of eliminate all those bargaining issues that, that might have been there, uh, in a circumstance like this. Uh, in terms of what you can do, you know, your superintendent is your chief executive officer. Uh, you can act with, under the contracts. Um, he can go ahead, um, within the scope of the contract and, and, and staffing as he sees fit. Um, I have the feeling you got a superintendent who will listen to you, you know. So I, I think any motion that you make here is going to be not, not final, but the motion should be one where you're asking the superintendent to look into a certain aspect of it, whichever direction that is, uh, and come back with more information. And I was listening to the discussion. I heard your time is short. Uh, you don't meet again until September first. I suggest that maybe you have a special meeting i- if that, if that works. I mean, uh, you, within a couple of weeks, um, if that might be a very practical approach to the issue. But again, I think Bob will listen to you. He's ultimately makes the final decision, but I have the feeling he will listen to what the majority of the school committee is interested in. Um, and again, from what I heard, my suggestion is you have a special meeting at some time, uh, within the next few weeks.
Okay, alright, thank you. So Dawn, if you choose to make a motion?
So my motion will be to have a special meeting, but in the interim also explore, uh, if it's feasible to have a, an interim, one season, uh, athletic director come in and fill that position while we, um, gather all of the information necessary to make that decision.
Great.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes.
Um, i- i- is the, uh, do we wanna make a motion to have Bob explore the option of having a full-time athletic director or an athletic director with a teaching position? Or are we making, or are we, are we just making a motion to come back and have-
Ask the person making the motion.
Well, my, my intent is to recommend Bob look into having an interim person to buy us time to make sure that we're making the right decision. That, that's what I'm motioning.
I would say that's almost two motions, isn't it? Isn't it one, there'd be one motion to meet within the timeline?
We can make it one motion if, if the, if somebody wants to second it or amend it for their second, then they can do that.
It sounds like on a practical level, you gotta have a motion, have a meeting and, and-
Yes.
Right.
And Dawn's recommendation is that this be looked at and I'm sure Bob's gonna thus look at it and respond. So I think, I don't wanna speak for the whole committee, but what you, committee wants is more information.
Yep.
You wanna explore all the alternatives is what you're looking for.
Yeah.
So what you're looking for is a special meeting to explore all the alternatives on, on the question of, of, uh, whatever position you're talking about.
Correct, athletic director.
Athletic director.
So Dawn, do you care to amend your, uh, your-
Can I just make it easy and say whatever?
What he said, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Uh, I'll say-
Well, just, just let me clear, what is the actual, what is the wording of the motion now?
The wording of the motion is to have a special school committee meeting, uh, sometime between now and the end of August.
With the superintendent to report on all possible options.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a motion and we have, we had a second already from Joe, so we'll take that. All in favor? Alright, so, uh, now we get to do the fun part.
I'll come back to you in August.
And everybody gets to pull out their calendars.
I'll, I'll, it's just in the interest of time and I'll have Melissa-
We can, Melissa can, we'll have Melissa reach out and communicate dates, yes.
And, uh, and we'll make sure I give you an informed, uh-
Excellent.
Information for that meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions on this piece? Alright, move on to the next. Kathy? You're gonna spend some money for us, speaking of money.
Only two warrants this evening that the school committees approve. And the first warrant is in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-two dollars and three cents.
Do I have a motion from Mike, second from Joe, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of nine-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-one dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, motion from Dawn, second from Jen, all in favor?
I do have a jury duty request this evening for approval for Joanne Fairbanks.
Okay. Uh, this does require a vote. Mike, would you like to make a motion? Mike would like to make a motion. I do have a second from Dawn, all in favor? Uh, motion has passed.
The committee has a list of all appointments from our previous meeting. In addition, I do have a professional development cost reimbursement request in the amount of eighteen-thousand-three-hundred-thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion from Joey, second from Jen, all in favor? Motion carries.
And that's all this evening, thank you, Mr. Chair.
My pleasure, thank you. Alright, do we have any new business? New business, any old business? Joe?
Yeah, just wanted to follow up with the committee, um, on the MAS C material that was handed out at the last meeting. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through it. Uh, but I did speak with Dorothy Presser, who was the, one of the ladies that was here last, uh, at the last meeting. And, um, she mentioned that the district governance program, it, it's made up of five or six different workshops. Um, each workshop lasts about two hours and she typically likes to stagger each workshop out four to five weeks. Um, so if, I just wanted to check in with the committee to see if they had an opportunity to review the material and if the, the committee feels it's worthwhile, worthwhile pursuing. And if so, I can coordinate some time with Dorothy. I know she mentioned that, um, she's fairly open in September and October. So if we wanted to kick things off September, in September, we certainly could do that.
Yeah, I, I looked through this and you being somewhat the new guy, not the new guy anymore, I, I think the more information the better. So I definitely am interested in that.
I agree.
Yeah, so I think, uh, getting some more information, what we can do is, is we can certainly just, you can approach, we can talk after, we can talk afterwards and you can certainly add it as, we'll certainly add this as an agenda item and just give me the dates and times that you're looking for and just email that to, actually coordinate with them.
Then maybe I'll coordinate with Melissa.
Yep.
Yep, sure.
Yep, perfect.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, are you envisioning that as a, um, as a, as a separate meeting to be added? Or adding this as an agenda just in the interest of how long the presentation table will take? And I, I, I've not been part of one of these. I'm guessing there's gonna be some sort of workshop style?
So part of that, so here's what I, my ask would be is, is if you, is to, uh, when you work with her, uh, talk with her about what that, all that information looks like, depending on what, what version the committee chooses to select as far as what that, what, what they're gonna be coming, talk to us about?
So I, I talked to her about that. Uh, she said typically the best practice is to schedule a separate night for the workshop. Um, you know, evenings work great for her. So if we wanna do something between six and eight on a Monday night, we can do that. If we wanted to do it at, on a Thursday, that does of course bond with the committee meeting, we could do that. So again, I'll, I'll circle back from Melissa and get availability, but, um, it, it, generally speaking, they do it weeknights. It's two hours. Uh, there's some homework after the fact. Um, and then, uh, so if we use the, the, the governance program as an example, the very first session is creating operating protocols. So she'd work with us and I'm creating operating protocols. We'd have a little bit of homework. We'd go back. We'd create our own operating protocols. And at the next session, four or five weeks later, before we kick off the next workshop, we would circle back and close the loop on the operating protocols. She'd review those with us, make sure that, um, you know, we had it in the right direction and at that point we could-
I would say from a timeline perspective, just thinking about what's generally on the agenda with the start of school and the next rounds of meetings, we're probably talking in an October meeting for the fir-, in, in, or October, probably for the first session. It'll probably be the timeline that we'll-
So we can circulate things with Melissa?
Probably be in October, just the, the beginning of school, there's very similar to the meetings that we've had for the last, sort of the end of school and the beginning of school. There's a lot of things that are required that already make these meetings fairly lengthy.
Sure.
Um, so I wanna make sure that I'm cognizant of the other school committee members. If other committee members have, have different feelings, then certainly, uh, we can coordinate calendars and, and, and working with Melissa on that.
Okay.
Alright, anyone else? Alright.
Scott, just one, one more thing.
Yes.
Just to draw to your attention, I'm not gonna get into too much detail here, but in the packet and the material that, that Bob handed out, um, at the beginning of the night, there's just no review of the different policies that we've reviewed year-to-date. Uh, so just for purposes of the committee, we, we plan on providing this at each meeting and it'll give you a sense for what we reviewed, what we have in queue and where we stand with some of these policies.
Excellent, so that'll be part of, if, when there, when there's a subcommittee update, that'll be part of the next one. Excellent, thank you. Alright, so, uh, the next piece is a motion to adjournment. We do have, uh, an executive session, uh, the purposes of which are to discuss a contractual matter with the Milford Teachers Association. Does require roll call to be taken. Um, so prior to, so we'll take our, our motion for adjournment and then we'll take roll call. Motion to adjourn from Mike, second from Dawn, all in favor? Uh, we will not be returning after executive session. We do require a roll call, so just go through. And, uh, Joe?
Present.
Present.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, do I need to recuse myself from this one or am I able to be present? Alright, then I, then yes for me as well. Thank you everyone, have a good night.